Going to just note that if anybody in the audience is recording, to please let us know now. Is my microphone on? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. All right. The Leominster School Committee represents the needs of all Leominster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leominster. We're going to open the public forum now. If anybody would like to address the committee, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Again, if anybody would like to address the committee, please come forward now. And one final last time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please come forward. Having no one come forward, we're going to close that portion of our meeting, and we're going to move on to the student report. I believe we have at least a couple of students?
No, I think it's just Josh.
Just one?
Yes.
Okay, Josh, if you could come up to the microphone, welcome.
Say, "Welcome back, Josh."
Josh. Just said hi. Hi. Um, hello.
Hi.
Hi, Josh.
My name is Joshua Anderson. I'm a student at the Leominster Center for Excellence. Um, I wanted to talk a bit about how LCE has been adapting to the ever-changing situation of just education as a whole over the past few years, and specifically talk about the learning through interest process and the internships and some of the work we've been doing there. So, at LCE, we've been encouraged to make connections in the community via email and phone call just to learn more about what this community has to offer as far as businesses, programs, stuff like that. And from there, we've gotten a diverse range of internships that our students have taken on. We've got students interested in early education, so they're interning at elementary schools and middle schools. Uh, we have a student who's interested in media production and television, so he's interning at Fitchburg Access Television, charities, bakeries, veteran centers, basically anything that you can imagine. We try to allow students to really just pursue their interests and learn through real-world experiences. And it's all about just engaging with the community and learning more about what this community has to offer. Because the truth is, Leominster is an amazing community with so much diversity and businesses and things like that. So, we just try and tap into every aspect of that and encourage students to stay informed and stay involved. We've been, uh, they've been encouraged to think about the future. We've had multiple trips to colleges around the state of Massachusetts, UMass, Fitchburg State, and just places like that. We encourage school-wide involvement through all the kit meet-outs, which is essentially this weekly end-of-the-day activity where a certain grade just plans an event, and the school, it's a school-wide participation thing that just encourages getting to know each other and growing this sense of community. Because I think that's something every school should have, just this sense of self and sense of each other. And so, yeah, and the internship process has not only evolved, but grown arguably over the past year or so because of the pandemic. A whole new range of opportunities has opened up. Obviously, it's not ideal, but obviously, if it could just not be a different way, then maybe that'd be preferable. But we've adapted to the best of our ability to the ever-changing situation, and I owe a huge debt of gratitude to the administration and to the advisors of LCE for just doing everything in their ability to help students grow and evolve throughout their high school education. It's not easy work, and they just deserve the praise of students and of the city of Leominster as a whole for their work. And I believe that's all I have to say on the matter.
You have three aspirations, as you can tell. So, absolutely, and I know that you're going to meet and exceed all those aspirations.
It'll be great. We're going to go into communications, superintendent?
There are no communications this evening.
Okay, superintendents report?
Sure, just a quick update. As many of you know, that there is no school on Friday. It's the beginning of the winter break. We are looking to return on January 3rd. This year is just a week, so I want to make sure that everybody enjoys their time off. I'm really hoping that people have some downtime, they get rejuvenated, come back with a positive spirit because starting January 3rd, you know, we're really looking at coming close to the end of another school year. So, it's gone very quickly. We're already more than halfway through the second quarter, so just, we're going to stay on the ball. So, I want people to enjoy that time. The big piece parents are still asking me about are snow days. Snow days will not be remote days. At this time, the Commissioner of Education is not supporting counting that time. So, we have five snow days, a traditional five snow days. So, if I call a snow day, which you know I don't love to do, it will be a non-academic day. There will not be the Chromebooks in classrooms and so forth. The Commissioner is talking about if we go beyond the five to consider remote days, but right now, in no circumstance, anything remote will be acceptable. So, should we have to call snow days at any point in time, it will go through school messenger, it will be a phone call and an email, and then we post it throughout all of our media. So, we're back to a traditional snow day, which it's okay. And just some exciting news, and I don't want to take Kathy's thunder away, but over the weekend, I worked with the city to secure some rapid tests for our students going into the break on Wednesday from 9:30 to 1 o'clock and from 3:00 to 6:00. Students, we have just a little over 2,000 rapid tests that families can come and grab one for over the holiday, however you would want to use it. Our hope is that right before you come back, maybe you could test on a Saturday or Sunday after being out for so long. But we have a sign-up, a survey went out this evening, and we are hoping to distribute all of those. I know that Doyle Field is having a distribution tomorrow, and it is on the city website, so there are two opportunities. We just ask that if you are taking a kit from another service area, try not to take one from the school so that we can cover more students rather than less. And that's it.
Great.
And happy holidays, everybody.
Great. We have presentations, we have the health update, so that's a good segue. Roundup, Kathy.
Lead nurse Kathy Godette.
Thank you for inviting me to present, Superintendent Deacon and School Committee. I'm so happy to be here. I was gonna do this part last, but, thank you. This is what the kit looks like that is gonna, that parents will be able to pick up for their kids. There's two tests in the one kit. I can hand it around so that people can just look at it. Please don't open it. I plan on putting it in with the mix so that someone will get that. It is an antigen test, so you do, it's the nasal swab. You go five pence in one nostril, five pence in the other nostril, and you insert it into the kit. And there's directions in regards to the drops of diluent. I believe it's three drops on that test. Each test is different. And as Superintendent Deacon said, we would really love for people to try to do it towards the end of school vacation so that if they are positive, they don't come into school, they know to stay home. So, that would be preferable. So, now, let me go into how I was gonna start. I was gonna start off in regards to the number or percentage of kids that are fully vaccinated. That's always been a big thing. Are we at 80% yet? Are we at 80% yet? No, not even close. The high school, the student population is around 52%, with the staff being around 55%. So, we're not there yet. We still need to encourage more people to get vaccinated. And I'm gonna say, it's not an exact science. I mean, we are depending on people to give us the vaccine results and also MIS, which is the Massachusetts Immunization database, thank you, where that holds everyone's immunization. So, we depend upon those things to give us our numbers. At Sammaset, you know, not too bad. They're in the 40s. Skyview is in the mid-30s. And the elementary schools, they've only been doing it for a month, and they're already anywhere from 7% for Pre-Street to 12% for Johnny Appleseed. So, I really feel positive about that, that in one month, so many people have gotten vaccinated. I did assist the Board of Health with some vaccine clinics in November and three weeks later in December. And the, um, we did over 300 people in the November one, and it was two days, Tuesday and Thursday. And then in December, we did over 700 people. It was amazing. I don't know if any of you were there, but it really was an amazing opportunity. Families, complete families, we were doing the pediatric immunizations for ages 5 to 11, but we were also doing boosters for both Pfizer, Moderna, J&amp;J, and flu shots. So, we were giving a lot of vaccines out. So, any questions in regards to the vaccines?
Should a parent report if their child's been vaccinated to the school nurse, or is the database catching?
It is preferable that the parents give us a snapshot or a copy of the vaccine card because not everything gets entered into the database. We found instances where, you know, certain physicians might not, certain companies might not, they might miss a batch. So, if you can give us that card, a picture of it, then we can put it into our school electronic health record for the child.
Are there plans for digital clinics in the upcoming year?
Yes.
We're working very closely with our Board of Health. It's been a really nice relationship. Mr. Stevens has asked and reached out to the school department if we would be willing on weekends to perhaps have it in some of our schools, and I said, "Absolutely, whatever we can do." So, Kathy and Mr. Stevens speak daily.
Yeah, literally. And we're also planning something the first week of January. We're just ironing everything out, but we hope to be communicating that soon.
Thanks.
Okay, so, the next, the BINAX Now is actually, you know what I want to do before that, is I want to do our positivity rates in regards to the city of Leominster and in regards to the school department. And noticed that I had grabbed the data from the city of Leominster, and I grabbed this from Mr. Stevens, and it's actually from the state COVID-19 webpage in regards to the percent positivity for the city of Leominster. Starting in August, we were down to 3.06%, and it's been slowly, you know, ebbing and flowing. But as of November, and especially right after Thanksgiving, it just peaked. So, the highest so far, 7.92%. So, to just be aware, that's, it's the result of Thanksgiving and people gathering and, you know, we, as, many of us have let our guards down because, you know, felt that it was safe and it was time to be with family. So, the numbers have gone up. So, then I want to compare that with the percent positivity in the schools. So, there's a couple of different things. With the BINAX Now, which is the test-and-stay program in schools, for that, we're testing kids that are symptomatic. We're also testing kids that are identified as close contacts, as well as staff members are identified as close contacts as long as they're not fully vaccinated. And as, and when you look at the percent positivity with all the tests that we've been doing, the schools using the BINAX Now are far below the city testing percent positivity. And I did want to point that out. Now, it is BINAX Now, which is an antigen test, and if people are positive, we are encouraging them to go and get a follow-up PCR. But it, the numbers are lower for those that are in school. Now, the next, I was trying to figure things out, and so the next thing I did was, I got the percent positive in the school, not positivity, because this is just the BINAX Now. This is the city of Leominster for the testing with the PCR. And it was really hard to tease out the PCR and the BINAX for the city of Leomin, for the students. So, I know a lot of people think, "Oh, my God, everybody in the school system has COVID. It's rampant." It's really not as high as people are thinking. I mean, the nurses are working really hard, the staff is working hard. Are there positive kids? Oh, my God, yes, there are. But when you look at the school percentages, the highest is in December, it's 2.4%. So, it's not what people are imagining that it is for numbers. Any questions about?
Can I just quickly ask, Kathy? I think you said, and I know this is probably more so common knowledge, but you said we're not testing fully vaccinated staff?
I'm getting to that.
Okay, excellent, because we know there's breakthrough cases happening here.
Oh, yes. So, I am getting to that. So-
Can you just go, sorry, go ahead. I've already asked one, you can-
Before you get to something new, the 2.4% is, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what that was.
In this room, right?
But that's, that's the PCR positivity?
So, it's not a positivity.
The percent of our students who tested positive?
So, for this percentage, I took the entire number of students and staff, so 7,204. And I took the number of positives that we had for that month for all of our schools. And I divided our number of positives by our student population. So, that's not a percent positivity because that would have been the total number of tests done with the total number of positives, where we divided that by the tests.
The 2.4% of school-
Correct.
-student staff-
Correct.
-tested positive in December.
Correct.
Brandon also has a question?
Just one more clarified question. So, that 7.92 that you said was at the peak, that's just people that went, said they were from Leominster, and got a positive PCR test? If they took an at-home test and never went, we don't know.
Not necessarily, because all of our BINAX Now get reported to the state, so those are included in here. Any of the home tests that they took where they used the app, then that, those would be reported. So, it's just really, it's a mixture of PCRs and antigens. So, that's why it was really hard for me to tease out just our school populations.
So, within-
So, some people who are not in that whatsoever.
Correct.
But on the same-
There's also a lot, there's also a lot that are not included because they were never reported.
But on the same token, that could be people who took an antigen and reported it through the app or whatever, and then got a PCR and also got a positive test.
You, well, it's possible. Usually, you have the person's name, and then you have all their tests below them when you look in Maven. But anything is possible. Some people have multiple accounts.
Okay.
Could it just be a child who or family who tested positive at home? And they have it, they're symptomatic, but didn't get a PCR test? They self-identified as a positive child?
Those would not be on Maven.
So, not included in the positive school number, necessarily?
Well, no, they, they might be in the positive school number, but they would not be in the city's number. They would not be in Maven.
But the schools are counting, yeah?
The, the schools, we may be counting them.
Okay.
But also, somebody could have taken the test, been positive, and then at the end of the quarantine, retested to go back to work or to school, and so then, if they were still positive, it's still the same person counted twice.
So, that might, it might count in Maven. It shouldn't because, but it might, because some people have multiple accounts. For the schools, we do not count it, because if it's within the 90 days, we put a note, you know, retested too soon, within 90 days.
So, you're saying Maven should be counting people, not tests?
Correct, correct.
It's not perfect, but that's what's supposed to be.
So- It's not perfect. It's what we have. Yeah. So, so next is the quarantine protocols. I think that everybody received this in their packets. Did y'all receive this?
No.
No, I remember seeing that.
No.
Sorry, we can send it off.
Okay, but you will-
Will you pass it around when you're done?
You will be receiving it. I am so sorry.
It's all right.
And it is on our school website, on the COVID-19 page right now. It's in English and Spanish, and the Portuguese has just been translated, so that will be on. And it explains, because there's so many questions as to who qualifies to test, who does not qualify to test. And so, this was a really nice explanation in regards to quarantine and testing. So, it goes into, you know, if you're positive, you have to stay home and isolate for 10 days from your onset of symptoms and be fever-free for 24 hours and prove symptoms, which everyone knows. Close contacts. For a close contact, that's anyone who is indoors. If you have the mask on, it's within three feet. Mask off, six feet. And those individ, and for 15 minutes or more within a 24-hour period. So, you have your choices of seven, 10, or 14-day quarantine unless you are fully vaccinated and without symptoms. So, people who are fully vaccinated without symptoms do not need to quarantine, they can be in school. Now, likewise, those, in addition, they had it so that the students and staff who are not fully vaccinated can participate in test-and-stay. Test-and-stay starts from day zero, which is your last day of contact with the individual. It ends on day seven after your contact with the individual, and it says that you will be tested for five days because there's a weekend thrown in there. If the child participates in sports or activities on the weekend, and it's still within their quarantine time, they will be given a BINAX Now kit to use, and there's that little app, so it gets reported, and they can show their coach the results so that they can participate in sports. And that's been really good. We have to have parental consent. We cannot test the child, the student, without parental consent. And the parents need to be notified prior, so your child has been identified as a close contact. Here's your option. You may choose to participate in test-and-stay for the seven days. These are going to be the dates. You can choose to keep them home for the seven days and test them on your own on day five or later, and then they can come back on day eight. Or without testing, they can come back on day 11 as long as they remain symptom-free. Or if they have any symptoms, they can stay out for the 14 days. So, we're supposed to communicate that to them, and I have a series of letters that I send out with the dates and everything to make people informed. Bus close contacts don't count as long as the windows are open and everyone's wearing their masks. Outdoor activities don't count because there's a lot of good air exchange. People who have had COVID within the last 90 days have assumed immunity, so they do not have to quarantine or test. So, like I said, there's a lot of confusion. And, and, I get it. A lot of people are scared. There are breakthrough cases. We will test anyone who becomes symptomatic during school.
I think frustration has really risen, just with the two symptoms as well. So, Kathy's page has all this information on it. It's on our district book site, the COVID section. So, families can go there, but I understand why there is this built-up frustration. You know, either, you know, you've got vaccinated and you have a mask, but now we're sending you home because we have symptoms. Kathy has been like that squirrel running back and forth in front of your car going down the street. I mean, it's the calls that come in because we have to justify all these different symptomatic possibilities. But she's got it up here, thank goodness, because I'm at the point, I said, "Who's staying and who's going?" I don't even know. But we are testing like crazy. We are, we're testing. One day in one school, we tested 123 students in one day, and we had three positives out of the 123. That's a lot of war.
That's good.
Yep, so, we're catching them, and then they call Kathy.
Does anybody have questions for Kathy at this point, Ron?
The test and, you were naming the Maven and the test-and-state. The test-and-state, does that get, does that get the-
Reported. Maven, yes.
Okay. Now, which is more accurate, the Maven or the test-and-state?
So, Maven is the repository that all the results go in.
Right.
So, BINAX is a screening tool. It's, it's not nearly as accurate as the PCR. The PCR is still the gold standard, which is why if we see someone who looks like they're really sick and BINAX says negative, we still, you know, tell the parents, "Look, it was negative, but I would encourage you to call your doctor and get a PCR for confirmation because their symptoms don't coincide with what we're seeing." Likewise, if we get somebody who's totally asymptomatic and they test positive with the BINAX, like, you know, this is an antigen. They don't present as being really sick or anything. Back it up with a PCR, check it out. As long as the PCR is done within 48 hours, those are the results that we follow.
How many, how many people have to, I don't know if you have the numbers, how many people have to be retested?
How many have to be re, so, anyone who is a positive with the BINAX, we encourage them to get retested anyways. So, it doesn't mean that people necessarily do, and if the whole household is sick, they just assume that they're sick too, so there's really not much of a reason. But we do ask them to talk to their doctor and discuss it.
And do they come back with a, with a note from their doctor at all? No, yes?
No.
Is it strictly voluntary?
For the PCR?
No, no. If they, you said they have to go see their provider, their doctor. Do they get a note from the provider seeing that they're taking it, was seen by their doctor and-
Sometimes they do, sometimes they do. But, I mean, just because I suggest someone see their doctor doesn't mean they're gonna go. It's a suggestion.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it, thanks.
Thank you.
Mike?
I have a couple of things. You said "fully vaccinated" quite a few times. Of course, the guidance on that has changed, right? Right now, if you're sixteen or older, that means three doses of the booster, or second of that J and J. Are we, um, would you, are we applying that? And if not, do we have plans to apply that as our definition of fully vaccinated soon? What's the status there?
That is a great question. So at this moment in time, according to DPH standards, fully back, and I'm just going by what I'm told, fully vaccinated is two doses with the second dose being at least fourteen days. So they haven't even incorporated the boosters in that discussion yet. I'm sure it will come, not yet.
Because at this point, we know that that third one is really required. So we should be, I get the policy, but we should be encouraging people to get that third one as well. Or the second one if it's J and J because it's really needed for protection against what's going on now.
And I agree. And there were so many people that got vaccinated in December that was getting boosters. It was amazing.
They had seven, seven hundred slots and seven hundred and eleven people showed up and they were able to provide the extra eleven. So that was very encouraging.
Yep, that's good. The second thing is just informational. We've been getting these emails with numbers about this situation fairly regularly, but we don't seem to get the same report every time. So I would really like it if we could going forward. We've twice gotten a breakdown of cases by age group. I think that's pretty important to see because those age groups, you know, you can tell who who were the students by the age group breakdown. Most of the time we haven't gotten that. So if we could, I know that has to come from the city, I think, but if we get them to provide that to us regularly, I'd like to, I think we should, everybody on, whoever, all the school committee members should see that weekly is the breakdown by age group. And also, um, the the vaccination numbers, I I just, I mean, fifty percent is, it's just not good enough. And I know we all have that eighty percent goal in mind and it's important to get to there. So I I think it would be really good if we could get a regular report on the vaccination percent status broken down by school. Or by, maybe not by, either by school or by level, high school, middle school, elementary, and so on. I think that's going to be important information for people making decisions down the road.
Before I create those reports, not like the report today that I did, I had to go through all six thousand two hundred kids and make sure they were updated. So it took me about a week to get that done. But it will be.
Is it going to take a week every time or we will just add to that?
Uh, so, so, um.
Yes is the answer.
So maybe once a month, not a week on the vaccination percent like?
Sure, I can do it monthly. Yes. And that was my plan, was to make sure that you had it at least once a month.
Kathy, they've already, they've also been receiving emails from our best receivers.
Yeah.
As I, as I gather those, I push those out. So there's different details in theirs, which is what you're providing on the school levels.
Right, yeah.
Right. Right.
I think he gave us the breakdown by age group, but he only did that twice. All the other weeks, we haven't gotten that.
But it is helpful to.
Right, right.
But it is, yeah. I was gonna say, it's also helpful to know like students versus staff and which schools.
Right.
And that's right.
Which is more accurate, the one from the board of health?
They're both, they're both accurate.
They're both accurate, but the same report.
Different.
Wow. Pick you back on what?
It's not a question of accuracy, Ron. It's a question of, it's one thing to see the rest of the positivity rate is this or that is going up, it's going down.
Consistency.
But I noticed when we, the two times we got the breakdown by age, the highest positive age group was elementary school kids.
Right.
The ones who were in school but couldn't be vaccinated.
Right.
The next highest group was the middle and high school students who have a sort of halfway vaccinated rate but are in school. You know, so it's, it's, was, it's another useful piece of information. It's not that it's more or less accurate. It's that whoever's making decisions about what we need to do to keep everybody healthy and safe is, we have. Oh, it's always, you know, a week or two behind.
A week, yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
And sometimes we all lose. I mean, what, you know, old news is yesterday's.
There's nothing you can do about that though. That's, that's how the state sends out reports.
Right, there's, it just takes that, it's tactic of power.
I, I don't know, guys. I, I must, maybe it's me, but you know, yesterday's news is yesterday's news.
Mm-hmm, like, but it's, it's, but that's how it's measured across the states, so we can't.
Well, that's why I was asking about Maven versus the the state versus the board of health. Which one is more relevant?
But they're getting the same thing.
It's all the same information. It's all the same.
We, we, we all get it from the same state database, at the same time database.
All this slow.
See, it's already, but when you get it, when you test positive, it gets to the average anyway. I mean, there isn't any way to be, to know what's going on now. We're always at least seven days behind because of the nature of.
Get it instantaneously.
But sometimes, I I get that, Michael, but sometimes seven days can be crucial.
Well, it's, it's a problem, but it's, I don't think it's solvable.
And I'm not blaming anyone. I'm, I'm not blaming anyone.
Right.
But, you know, you're, you're asking these questions on the board of health numbers and Kathy trying to give them to us, but she even admits that that, that it's either the state or somebody is dragging their feet with the information.
No, I don't think they're dragging their feet. It just takes that much time for everybody to, for them to take a pilot.
Yeah, she didn't say anything about dragging her feet.
In accuracy, yeah, I understand.
I didn't say, I didn't, I just said that there's like a lag time.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Lag time, guys.
Ronnie, Ronnie.
And it's not her fault.
No, but Ronnie, with the state data, they have to go through this whole process of making sure that it's accurate, recorded, and released. So, and and they release it for the whole state, for all the communities of the state, so everyone has access to the data um, by Thursday late afternoon, Friday morning. And it's the, it's the state database. It's, it's already gone through all of their, um, uh.
Filters.
Filters, exactly.
Yeah, there's a lot of filters I asked for.
Any other questions for Kathy? Melissa?
I don't know if it's specifically for Kathy or the administration, but, um, as we're hearing how low the vaccination rates are in the schools, I wonder if we need to inform parents of what the vaccination rates are at their schools. So maybe it's a, an email from Mr. Vera at Francis Drake saying, hey, we're looking for eighty percent and we're at seventeen. Because I think people have their eye on January fifteenth. And it's nowhere near January fifteenth based on these numbers. So I wonder if it might be a good idea to have individual schools sending out vaccination rates. Doesn't have to be weekly, but maybe monthly or certainly before January fifteenth.
And that's part of the effort of bringing Kathy forward this evening, getting that information in front of the public.
Anybody else? Peter?
Not a question. I just thank you for everything you've been going through, you and the nurses and and everybody involved in general. You know, the test and stay programs and the vaccine clinics that you held are great proactive ways to try and, you know, keep everybody and everything going. So, you know, just thank you for that.
You're appreciated.
You're the best.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Great. All right, we're looking for approval of the December sixth minutes.
We moved to approve the minutes for December sixth.
Any, um, omissions, corrections, or errors?
There was one small typo that I already told Chris about.
Of course, we're gonna miss this, Mike.
Yes, they are gonna miss him.
It says wage words, should say wage.
Oh, I see.
I found it.
Yeah. Wade.
Wade, yes.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Right.
Opposed, motion carries. We're gonna move on to subcommittee reports. Finance, is there anything to report today?
Finance subcommittee has not met since the last school committee meeting, so there's nothing to, nothing official to report.
Right, and policy, we met tonight?
And, um, we decided to follow the past.
So, yeah, Brandon, do you want to?
Yeah, so, last meeting, Michael had asked some questions that we asked to be sent to the lawyer. We got a response back on those today. Basically discouraging us from straying from mass general law unless we went through the formal exemption process through the state. We talked in the policy subcommittee tonight, um, prior to the meeting.
And, and voted.
And voted. Prior to the meeting, I had spoke with Representative Higgins about this, um, who was willing to file a home rule petition for us. Um, the policy committees, uh, decided this evening and voted on it that that is the route we would recommend to the committee. As we feel the policy we have kind of drafted would best serve our district where we have a comprehensive high school. Um, and we're bringing that to the full committee for vote.
For vote, yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we ask Representative Higgins to file a home rule petition, uh, to ask for an exemption for the, uh, student rep policy.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
And so for discussion, we really felt that our policy was more inclusive of all of our three programs um, and wanted to reflect that. And we're a very unusual school. There's only one other comprehensive high school and that only has two components and we have three components in our school, uh, population. So that's, uh, the course of action we're recommending. Mike and then Brandon?
Yeah, so again, I mean, I, I never having a personal objection to our policy, the poli- the policy came up with makes sense. It, it does a good job of, um, ensuring that each of the three schools is represented and gets to talk to us. I just, my question was just, could we legally do it? So this is how we would legally do it, so I'm fine with that.
And thank you for some of the other questions.
I just wanted to add as well, I should have said this before, I'm sorry. One of the things that Representative Higgins had shared with me was the time that it might take where this wouldn't be instituted until the next school year anyways.
Right.
We felt that we had, we were okay with that, um, to, to wait.
Yeah, we agreed to do it.
So we then have a school advisory committee done according to mass general law this year while we await that result?
No, because I think the way, not, well, I guess we're not, the policy committee's not recommending that because I think we need to be firm and clear with everyone instead of changing it and it being confusing for folks.
The intention was to not institute this policy until the new school year anyways because the time it would take
School year, right.
to have an election happen and then set that committee up.
Both, and both the mass generals and our policy stated that the election would be at the end of the school year for the following year. So that's what we are anticipating. We still will be able to do.
Right, that's what I meant, so.
Yeah. Peter?
I, I will say I'm a little disappointed that it's gonna delay things a little bit further. I understand that we're in a unique position. You know, I would have, I would have liked us to institute it under the mass general law, more or less how it is. And then, uh, you know, working with the elected student advisory committee, you know, work on, you know, what it ultimately be crafted. Because what we're kind of trying to do is, you know, balance the quality and equity, uh, between the, the three buildings. And, you know, even that isn't perfect because, you know, I have nothing against LCE, but it's gonna give LCE more proportional representation than it actually has population wise. So I, I understand why we're moving, you know, that's the recommendation and, and, uh, you know, what's being put in front of us. But I would have really liked to see us move ahead with something that allows the student, for the student advisory committee to be formed for next school year. Uh, and then kind of try and perfect it after that.
I think we were still hoping that we could do that anyways because it was never going to be instituted, you know, this, this school year is going to be for September.
Okay, uh, well, I mean, uh, but in terms of like voting for, it was, it was never gonna happen this school year. It was always gonna start next school year?
At the end, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, based on how it's written.
All right, I, I mean, I'm still worried timeline wise, but I mean, if that was the original plan, then I guess that's a little better.
All right, we have a motion, a second. If there's no other discussions, all those in favor? Opposed? We have one opposed.
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Just for record.
Thank you.
Yep.
One opposed and one abstained. All right, anything else from policy?
No, nothing else. Well, we.
We did talk about that we would be revisiting some of our policies to reflect, you know, some of the.
And Melissa brought up, you want to talk about it, Melissa, go ahead, about how we should all have.
So one of the topics that's been in the press and it's brought to, been brought to me lately is having, um, sort of like a menstrual equity policy and providing, um, supplies at all of the schools and making them available so that girls in particular are not missing class time. Um, so there is funding and grants and resources that are made available to provide resources to schools. So there was discussion about looking into creating a menstrual equity policy at all of our schools.
Although we think that we are already providing that, um, and.
Right, but if there's grants and funding available, it might be worth entertaining.
So we were gonna look into what we are currently doing.
Correct.
I'll look at Kathy.
Um, and then just in general, making sure our policies are updated to reflect some of our COVID, um, changes, challenges.
Challenges, yeah.
So.
So those are things we'll be working on, uh, coming up. All right, thank you. Um, we're now moving on to action items and we need to, uh, again, we have already voted on the representative policy. Now we're into new and old business. Um, I clearly have something, but does anybody have anything besides these folks before, um, we get to that?
What, Sue? No, I, I, I did have something.
Yeah, no, I'm calling on you. Oh, okay. Um, this being my last meeting, um, tonight is bittersweet for me. I'd like to thank the voters of Lemonster for allowing me the opportunity to serve Lemonster as a school committee member for the past twenty-eight years. I've enjoyed my service to the city and I wish the best to the new school committee members. My advice to you is that most things get accomplished by working respectively as a team. Thank you. Thank you. Um, we are going to acknowledge the four people leaving in just a second. Does anybody else have anything that's not pertaining to that?
I just have one quick thing.
Sure.
Melissa and I attended a holiday concert at Sammaset and the high school last week and I just wanted to give a shout out to Bob Landry, Arthur Pierce, and Bobby Bergeron. Concerts were phenomenal. The, the students were amazing, uh, and, and I think Melissa and I had a great time.
Yeah.
Um, I had just one thing. I know that, um, we've been approached by one of our incoming members um, about, uh, fully remote participation, um, and just to let people know that we are looking into the legalities and the appropriateness of that, um, as a committee, just so that, um, the full transparency for the public. Anybody else have anything? Okay, so with that, um, I do want to say that we have four people, um, leaving our committee. Um, and, uh, I am very, very sorry to see all four of you go. You each have done a superb job supporting, um, each other, but more importantly, um, the school district, the students of Lemonster, the parents and the staff, each of you have made, um, a numeral, uh, contributions and, um, have been thoughtful, um, in your questions, um, in your votes. We may not have all agreed, but that's what makes, um, it, a democracy and what's important. But we've all been respectful of each other, um, and we've all done our due diligence of, uh, really taking a serious look at all the issues, um, that have come before us and certainly the past two years have been more challenging than most. Um, and for some of you, you've walked right into, um, a tumultuous time to be on the committee. Um, and that has not always been, you know, easy for everyone. But I really sincerely appreciate everyone's, you know, efforts. And, you know, Sue in particular, you have shown incredible dedication. You have done so much, uh, work on finance, on championing, um, special education. And really, um, been involved in so many different committees, um, with hiring, um, with, you know, various, you know, policies and, I'm thinking of, uh, certainly the, um, business manager positions. You've been, you know, working very closely with them throughout your tenure. You've worked with numerous, uh, superintendents, um, and I really appreciate all your effort and commitment and dedication. You've spent hours and hours serving, um, the students and families of Lemonster, so thank you so very much. I do also have, um, we have people in the audience to recognize and when they're done, I do have, um, Claire Frida has sent, uh, something. She couldn't be here tonight, but I'm gonna read her response. But we have, um, somebody from the city council, Sue Schalfer, uh, Zaffar, to come forward and Natalie Higgins from our state senate. So if you guys would like to come forward and, uh, so to the school committee members who are leaving us, or leaving the school committee today, I just want to bring my thanks and congratulations to the school committee representatives and the entire Massachusetts legislature. I have citations for you all and I just want to thank you for the partnership that you have been able to be in with the state, helping us advocate to make sure that the Lemonster public schools are receiving the funding that they deserve.
that the Lamonster Public Schools are receiving the funding that they deserve and making sure that the Student Opportunity Act was done correctly and recognize the needs of communities like ours, and that it's being fully phased in. I cannot thank you enough for all of your service. So I'm looking forward to seeing you all after this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to extend my thanks as a city councillor to the, the four people that are leaving the school committee. I personally will miss each and every one of you very, very much. Sue Kohler, we'll talk later, and I do have a citation from the city council thanking you for your service.
And I wanted to meet Claire's. She said, "Thank you, the wonderful people down there, the active, safe people," "as about Sue Kohler, as she ends incredible public service to the children, parents, and the entire community of Lamonster." Sue started on the school committee twenty-seven years ago as I was ending my six years as a school committee member to run for city council. She's been a strong advocate of the fiscal responsibility and has an institutional memory for mandates, laws, and DESI regulations as they apply to finance. She has overseen many administrations during her tenure, and while she asks for explanations regarding expenditures on the local level, she also asks the same questions of the state. Sue spent many hours lobbying for more equity for our children through her longtime involvement with the Mass Association of School Committees, earning her a prestigious lifetime service award for her tenacity. I would like to express my gratitude to Sue and wish her well. I'm sure she will continue to advocate for our students and staff through her many associations on the state level. I know she will always have a special place in her heart for the underserved and students with challenges. We are losing a dedicated member of the Lamonster School Committee. She will be missed, Claire Frida.
That's very nice.
So that was very nice. I don't give anybody else an opportunity to speak. I know Isabel wanted to speak, I don't know if anybody else did.
Yeah, I just, thanks, Eileen. I just want to say a few things, having been on the school committee for four years. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your collaboration and your wonderful work and getting to meet all of you and your friendships. It's been wonderful. It has been an absolutely wonderful learning experience. And I don't say this often, but I'm going to say this because I do think it's quite an achievement. I'm the youngest person ever elected in the city of Lamonster at nineteen, and I've served on the school committee for four years. And so to the many students and young folks out in the community, you can care about your community, you can wanna make it stronger. If you don't have children, it's okay to want to be on the school committee. You have spent most of your life in the Lamonster Public Schools, and it's okay to want to make them even better than when you were a student. I want to wish nothing but success for the new school committee. Your success means our students and our schools are succeeding, so I wish nothing but the best. And I'm going to continue advocating. I'm sure I will see many of you in the future, at future meetings. And to our community members who have sat through meetings, who have advocated while I've been here, while I've sat there, please continue to do so. It is so important to pay attention. It is so important to watch our budget process. It is so important to catch when our budgets are being underfunded. It's so important to advocate to our local administration when that happens. And so I, I just want everyone to continue paying attention, continue advocating, continue speaking out. And it's just been a wonderful experience, I'm so grateful for it. Grateful for you, Superintendent Deacon. You've been the only superintendent I've worked with, but you've been phenomenal, your cabinet, everybody. So thank you all so much. Thank you to those who have supported me, my family, and the voters of Ward Three, but most importantly, everyone in Lamonster. It's really, really been an honor.
Anybody else? Peter?
Yeah, also, just thank you to everyone, you know, everyone here, everyone who, you know, had voted for me. And it's been an honor, you know, and I'm grateful to have, you know, been able to be here in this position. Obviously, these last two years were not what was expected when running for office. You know, COVID wasn't even something we talked about during that time. But I'm glad I was here, you know, when I was. You know, it's unfortunate that it's still something that we have to think about. And, you know, one, one thing I would say for the folks coming in is, you know, the, you know, I wish them the best of luck, I wish you all the best of luck who are continuing. But, you know, don't, don't let a desire to be right, you know, prevent you from do, what's doing, oh. Prevent you from doing what's right. But, no, thank you all for this experience. And, you know, as I said when I mentioned that I wasn't going to run again, you know, this isn't goodbye. I'm gonna continue, much like Isabel, to advocate and be an active member of this community.
So I'm not big on speeches. So I will just thank the voters of Ward One for allowing me to serve them for the last four years, and thank you all for putting up with me for the last four years.
It's been a pleasure.
Absolutely. Yep, if, oh, if you don't mind. I want to say thank you to all four of you. You brought such a different array of knowledge. Sue, you do have that institutional knowledge. You're like a vault. If I, if you didn't have it at this day, she was going to go back and find it. And so having that was really important to a younger school committee, you know, a fresher school committee, because there are reasons why we do things. And, and having that background, you've taught us quite a bit, so we really want to appreciate that. The advocacy for the Student Opportunity Act and for students. I've never learned so much about formulas in my life, and I thought I was a pretty good mathematician. So thank you for really advocating for the children. I, I don't think people understand how hard it is to make sure that our kids count. And that's really what it's about, our kids count, and they should have the same opportunities as any child in the state of Massachusetts. You have taught me quite a bit legally, legislatively, mathematically, Michael, I don't know. I'm just gonna say thank you, but really for the children. And I, I have a small gift, and it's actually about the kids. So I would like to give a piece of student-ness to each of you. And these are embroidered by the students, so that you actually will always be a group. Always, thank you.
So I have some more.
And you know, Miss Kohler, I don't know if I'm gonna give you one yet, because our students actually made something a little bit different to you. They, this is a big deal, because this is not easy to come by. Yes. The students, are you ready? So the students actually made you your Adirondack. And this is a very special gift. And they also, we had to repaint it because we don't know if you want to leave it outside or not. It will be delivered to your house tomorrow. And the graphics put a plaque on there with your years of service. And so we, I said it wasn't gonna cry.
That's so sweet.
We want to say thank you so much, and then you've done this for the children. Oh, what the heck, you can have a shirt of them. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Well, thank you, and thank you all of you. You will be greatly missed, and we're glad that you will be out there championing, you know, for the students and the community. I really appreciate that. Did anybody else have anything else?
I'll just quickly add, I don't think I can say anything more than everybody else has already said. But thank you all for the experience of working with each and every one of you. I learned very different things from each of the people sitting across the table from me, and it really has been my honor to work with you because I, I would not be where I am today, you know, two years into my service on this school committee without each and every one of you. So thank you for everything you've done to help me and to help our students.
All right, Ron, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just repeat what everybody else said. I, I truly enjoyed working with the four of you guys. I enjoyed it very much. It was an experience, and I really liked the experience. You both, all of you provided, provided experience and understanding in the process. I think I learned from you guys, and if you learned a little bit from me, I don't know. But I know I learned a lot from y'all. You were very good. That's it.
Thanks, Ron.
Thanks.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, we are going to ask for a motion to adjourn, but I would.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Are we, we actually vote on it?
Come on, we want to be on the record.
Um, I will let you make that motion, but I want everyone to please stay and have some refreshments. We have some cake and cookies and fruit and stuff over there.
Chris Silverman.
And Chris Silverman.
And Ashley.
And Chris stayed here for today. Absolutely, so please join us, everyone. Now you can make your motion.
Motion to adjourn.
And Michael seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you, everyone.